Present and the meeting has been duly called. I noticed that this meeting had been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. At this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Tom Fraser if he'll provide the invitation, please.
Yes, let's pray. Lord, I thank you so much for this glorious day that you blessed us with, and I thank you for this opportunity to gather here to discuss the betterment of the school leadership of students there, Lord, and I thank you for each of these board members' servants' hearts that they have to sacrifice the time away from their family and to come here and to do all of the research and the study that goes into this difficult task. God, we're most grateful for your son, Jesus Christ, who offered himself up willingly and freely for our eternal benefit. In your son's holy and precious name, I pray, amen.
Thank you. And now, I ask Ms. Crane, present to you, principal, to help us with our pledges. You'll be standing.
Please stand for the United States pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I mean the Texas pledge. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one unit, indivisible.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to open the meeting for our public hearing to discuss Godly ISD and Hill College tax rates for '25-'26. Mr. Davis, the floor is yours.
Good evening, board. So, we'll be presenting a recommendation later on in the board meeting to adopt a tax rate. We've talked about this multiple times. This is an opportunity for any member of the public, if they want to ask questions specifically on the rate. Or if you have any additional questions, we'll be able to answer them.
Does anybody have any questions for Spencer on the Hill College tax rate? Okay.
At this time, we'll close our public hearing. We'll move on to superintimate reports, and Dr. Dear.
Okay, so we'd like to show you some highlights from our third annual community report, oh, sorry, just columns, which emphasizes our Godly Community-Based Accountability System that looks at multiple data points that our communities, holders are important to us. Mr. Collins is going to give us just an overview of it.
All right, good evening. Yeah, so we should have it, be able to click on that, open it up. So, like Dr. Sibl, first of all, good evening. And so, like Dr. Dear, make sure this is our third annual community report. And a lot of work, and so it goes into this throughout the year, but then putting the report together, getting everybody together, getting data, getting information, all the things that we're looking at, and word out and show what's happening in Godly ISD. So, I want to recognize the efforts of each member in putting this together and using the information now, the principals, assistant principals, directors, everybody, work to pull all of this together, get them to it, get it to them, so that we can make it look like it does. And so, we're excited. I think it's about thirty pages, about thirty pages full of information. And so, kind of what C-VAS is, and then each pillar is identified, different things that we're doing within each pillar. We'll see some data, some information, STAR data, accountability, SAT scores, all kinds of things. And then, in addition to lots of students doing what they do to be successful and to learn and grow and be ready for the future and ultimately to graduate in Godly ISD. So, we love this cover. Oh, so, you see Bartow doing something we're not going to do. Again, throw candy from the table, so we're just kind of, you know, commemorating that that we used to be able to do that. So, we thought that was a great picture, though, and just kind of captured some of our small-town, small-town feel. And that's another thing that we focused on throughout this, is trying to capture small-town feel within this. So, I'm not going to go page by page for thirty pages with you, but I do just kind of want to hit some of the highlights. So, we flip to the next. So, here's, yeah, just some explanation, and then survey results, we've included that in each edition, just to kind of see where we're at with things. And then, so, capturing the picture of Dr. Dear there. So, and then, you'll see some QR codes throughout, so that you can click on, click on that QR code and find all the information. Because ultimately, we know there's a lot going on, and it's challenging to get everything. There's a lot of good stuff that we still can't make it in here, and so, opportunities to underestimate that. So, with this. Our demographics enrollment, you see the rough twenty-eight percent growth over the last four years, kind of who we are. And then, STAR testing data, school accountability, there is a stat shout-out there, recognizing our new merchant bot angle, Christina Sosey, joining the district. And so, in addition to STAR data, there's also APP data, showing how we did it there. And there's the SAT data. So, then you'll see students, there's those, these students shout-outs, and these are two students who did exceptionally well this week in the day. Always want to get a graduation picture in there. The graduation picture is, you know, just a highlight culmination of the years and years of work that so many people have put into this to get to that point. And Mr. Corr always does a great job of talking about how important that graduation is, what we're working towards. And, oh, Kim Kenneson on the previous page, it was nice to do a profile on her as well. Programs of study, highlighting the things that are going on in the wild. Yeah, I like these pictures, seeing what's, what the student-run enterprises that are going on. So, there's the store and a lot of pools, so making students, students making those, doing all of that work. More opportunities for students, and then highlighting down at the bottom there, FFA, CTSO, and student achievement there, and highlighting, as you can see, Mr. Carter there, made it to Dallas Baptist, one kind of unique thing I don't think we've had before, and going on our efficiency, so that's pretty exciting. Just want to do a shout-out there. Community engagement and partnerships, love capturing this picture coming in there last year with the American flag landing on the field. Appreciate the sponsors for making that happen. Nantors Care, which is a new, new this year, excited to get that kicked off. And then, Walk at Dads, which is bigger than anything, you know, we started off with watchdog dads many, many years ago, and now it's a much, Walk at Dads. So, excited to have dads on campuses, seeing those. We love the Johnny Appleseed picture down there, capturing those kids. We wanted to make sure we get that in there, we thought that was just a fantastic picture. Always like to highlight our teachers of the year, our professionals of the year, give them a shout-out and recognition in this as well. And then, there's Dr. Block in the primary role, and then connection to showing everybody who our campus leadership is at every campus. This has been a staple every year, showing first ratings, tax, tax information, and then did a little shout-out there for, which we'll call out, I guess, if you will, for the house, the business annex over there, right next to RPG, pointing people to that for those services. A lot of things here. There's always a lot of things in safety and wellbeing, school well on this, and the survey results as well, all the things that we're doing. And then, also showing our officers there for Godly ISD, Godly ISD PD. Well, safety, and highlighting our links graduates, and then, in addition to safety, we had two staff members who were to receive awards for safe, being safe in the workplace and encouraging those to do the same. That is all. And of course, our sponsors were seen throughout there as well. And so, anyway, we're excited to present this to y'all, and this is just information only, we just wanted y'all to see it, just as we've done in the past, it would be made available digitally and sent out, and then it would be mailed to everybody within Godly ISD, seven-six-zero-four-six, it goes within our, do you think, Godly ISD? We also have a few people who are outside of the district, parents, you know, a dad or something, or a mom might live outside of the ISD. So, if you members are getting that information, sort of, I'd like to know all the things that are going on in Godly ISD, and then we'll have copies available also in offices. A lot of us carrying around and handing out to people. So, this is the Godly ISD year-end report.
I think you have a question. I just want to say thank you. Third year in a row, I'm super proud of, you know, where we were in 2019 and where we are today, and how this all was just taught at first, and it was progression, and it's something we're sticking with. I'm just, it's probably one of the best things, I think, that we do as a district, and communicating with all of our stakeholders and showing, not only all the good things that we do, but the areas that we need to improve on. So, I think it's fantastic. I know so much work goes into it every year, so I just wanted to say thank you to everybody that's been helping. I did have one question, which did, there, very end, mentioned our sponsors, the advertisements that were seen throughout the publication. Do those pay for the publication entirely, or is some of that not, is some of the cost of the printing not covered by that?
I'll ask somebody that knows a little bit more of it.
So, as it relates to the specific printing, we actually use our community engagement funds to be able to use for these.
So, are the advertisements just, are they people who are part of the education foundation, or are they, are those paid advertisements?
Yes, ma'am, so they are paid advertisements. So, we have different levels of sponsors. So, on Friday nights, we'll see them during the games, you see them running on the video board, as well as we're starting seeing them hopefully in the premium hours of this program as well.
Those are the four anchor sponsors for the education.
Thank you.
Yes.
On the very back, we see, I think, all twelve.
Correct. So, we have anchor premier and founding, so different groups.
My question was, sending the information out, that that would go out in, like, Perrin Square, and we, when you confirmed it would be mailed to every ISD address that we have students?
Yes, and that's correct.
Every address, not just students. Every address, not just students.
Correct, yes. Everybody in the community should be getting it, yes.
And if they don't get one, they can pick one up at any campus.
That's, that's correct, yes.
Awesome. Great, thank you.
And, and it's online, yeah, it's on, yeah. And online, too, I think in that QR code that I showed earlier, that you can see the previous editions as well, so twenty-two, twenty-three.
I applaud you as well, great job, thank you.
Any questions, Jason? All right, thank you, Mr. Collins.
All right, next, we'll ask Dr. Corr to come and talk about the district improvement plan for '25-'26.
So, this is our first review of the district improvement plan, so it's pretty much informationally. Take a look at it, we'll, of course, provide, and each board member of the group will talk, so you can, you can give us feedback, and then the next board meeting, we will come back and have a little discussion about it. If you have any just high-level questions, you're welcome to ask Dr. Corr, go ahead.
And we did split it up this year, so I am going to present the first goal. And our first goal for academic literacy and numeracy is to increase our overall academic annual accountability rating by three points, which would bring us up to an overall B for the state. And we'll do that through a variety of early literacy and data, and just a variety of strategies that we will be including over the next month or so. But for that first goal, we're going to increase three points to a B.
And a quick question on that, just for the public. What all goes into those three points, and how do we achieve that to earn those three?
So, it will look at STAR achievement, it will look at annual growth on STAR, as well as our closing the gap, looking at specific subpopulations, increasing the scores there. And we'll be looking at STAR data in several different ways, but academic growth is our primary focus.
And we'll, that's, I know you said that's a quick question, but that's not a quick question, it's a lot, because that, that discussion will happen next, next quarter.
Yes.
We say we're going to discuss that, and we're thinking, like, action, you know, not just looking at, but the action and the step behind them, right?
Yes, we've got lots of big things happening, so.
Thank you, I didn't want to.
All right, and so, I'm here for our goal two, is focus on the pillar of professional learning and effective staff. And we want to, of course, continue to attract and retain highly qualified, life-changing teachers and staff. And one way we want to do that, and we're going to focus on their participation in our end-of-year climate survey. Last year, we had about, well, we want the climate survey, thirty-five percent of our staff participating, which would be an eleven percent increase over last year. And so, we have adjusted just a little bit, where this year, we're giving the survey three different times. And we're going to have a section that is just for the campus, to have campus-specific questions based on their goals, and then we're going to have a section that are common questions that all of the campuses will ask about the campus and the district, so that way we can streamline that a little bit, have that time and feedback, and we want to make sure that our staff does feel like they have the input that they need, so that we can help them enjoy their workplace.
And goal three is around student readiness and safety and wellbeing. So, our goal here is to increase attendance by point five percent over the course of this next full year. The focus there really is on if students feel safe enough to come to school, then they will be here in attendance more than they would be if they did not feel safe at school. And we have some new indicators built into Frontline, it's called an early warning system, so it pulls discipline data, attendance data, grades, and we're able to type in a pass and app for students through that, and really target interventions for them, and to build in some supports, so that they are ready for their next step. And if students are in attendance more, then they're more ready than they were if they were not here with us. So, in addition to that, the high school's put in some new procedures as far as TSI testing and aligning financial math and business English with college bridge, which are tests that demonstrate college readiness for English and math for those students. So, and there's a couple of pieces there as far as supporting those students, and we'll have a full plan for you next time. Any questions?
Any other questions? All right.
Thank you. Thank you all for your participation. Next, we're going to go into public participation. At this time, we extend the opportunity for the public participation portion of the meeting in compliance with Section 551.007 of the Texas Government Code, and we have one person wishing to address the board at this time, and that is Ms. Helen Curwood.
Representative Curwood, you're up. We have to take Representative Helen Curwood to give us a quick legislative update, so she's actually going to speak on several things on the agenda. We welcome her. Glad she's back, we've had two special sessions.
I'm sure you love that homecoming, Mom, you've got.
Hey, Nikki, help her make sure we get the mic on, okay? You go ahead and finish what you were saying, we'd love to hear about what you, where you just came back from. You were over two.
I, I, I'm really speechless, you know, I've only been here one, am I losing my train of minutes here, because I don't have bills to talk about? I mean, I, I have for ten months campaigned in Johnson County, and never did I hear Godly ISD High School was anything close to where I just heard. I really, I really am speechless. Forty classrooms, the diversity and the opportunities for these kids, the room store, the flower shop, all of the technology, broadcasting, the radio, it's amazing, it's amazing.
And we've only been able to do it from the amazing support of our community, that we wouldn't have done it without them.
It, I mean, I just, I can't say enough, I'm just so impressed, so impressed with the kids that are going to the store, what they're going to be able to do, what, I mean, from graduation. It, it was just a brilliant experience, and thank you so much, local spike. Okay, well, as your representative, and I thought that I just needed to come and tell you a little bit about our legislative session and our two special sessions we've just finished. We passed some really good bills. I know that it's not out there, but I'm just going to tell you a little bit about, there was good bills, there was bad bills, there was mixed, and there were some bills that we should pass, that I'm hoping maybe we can do in the next session. The bill that I am the most proudest of is our foreign hostile nation bill, the China Vancouver bill. We are now the state of Texas, we have the strongest bill in America against those four countries, China, Russia, and North Korea, buying or leasing or investing in any property in our state. So, I think that was a big win for all of us. The second one is our grid security. We had two really good bills passed, one to protect cyber, protect from cyber attacks, and then also one to just about our critical infrastructure in addressing that. That was a really good bill. We need to do more on that, though. Border security, we finally passed a bill where the vets can now work with our state. We couldn't do that before, so we're ready. The tech payments, and I saw you have them posted. That was a six and a four-hour debate, getting that bill through, so, so glad to see those on your classroom walls. Election integrity, we passed two really good bills. Our AG now can prosecute, it doesn't go just to the DM. And the other one I'm really excited about is anyone involved in an election poll watch candidate with any observation of an irregularity can go directly to the Secretary of State, get an explanation. And that was a really good conservative bill. Okay, the mixed results, property tax, EPT, that's my big thing, and I think we're getting there. We, we had, you know, we have a home stand now up to two-hundred thousand for the seniors and the disabled, and because of that, we're going to have a lot of seniors not even paying annual taxes. So, I think we opened the door, and even though I wanted it to be a little bit more, I think we're going to get there, hopefully, in the next session. I'm trying to hurry. Okay, school discipline, HB six, we now gave the right for all teachers to make the decision, I think you probably are on this, to remove a student, and what's really neat is to actually have the same when they can, when next student can return to their classroom. So, discipline is something we heard over and over and over in our testimony, high specifics, high school accounting. Okay, bad bills, there were a few, and I think the worst bill, and I voted against it, was five hundred billion dollars to bring the California film industry into Texas. Why would we use your tax dollars to do that? The budget, eight percent increase, every year, the budget increases. Bad bill, voted against that. Attempt to advance the OBG agenda, there is a very, very strong representation in the House and in the Senate, not quite as strong, trying to push that agenda, so we will have that in every session. Okay, so, I know the biggest thing that most of the constituents wanted us to do is to punish the quorum breakers. We all agreed with that, you know, they walked out, we wasted two weeks. When they came back, we all felt that they needed to suffer some sort of consequences for the quorum-breaking quorum. We made, we made the motion, we didn't have enough votes, we couldn't get it done for these current quorum-breakers, but the final bill of the nine on Section Three was an establishment of penalties to prevent that from ever happening again. So, at least we got that done, and we got some pretty stiff penalties to, to keep them from doing that. So, the school funding bill, HB two, how close am I to it? Am I good? Okay. The school funding, I ran over, check, can I just do a little bit on HB two? Okay. HB two, and I was shocked to be put on the public ed committee, I'm just a mom, so glad I was, because I, I learned that in these over hundred hours of year-end testimony, students, teachers, educators, superintendents, we heard every perspective. And the bottom line after each day was always, we are not recognizing our teachers, we are not supporting them, we are not paying them enough, we give money to the districts, let's change that. Let's give money to the districts, but directly to the teachers. So, some of the ways we did that, every eligible teacher sees surveys, we drew the line in administration, we thought this, this particular section, we are going to use this money, we have billion dollars, try to change and open the door to our Texas public education, make it better, come up in the ratings. Five hundred million for non-administrative staff pay raises, that's your bus drivers, cafeteria ladies, recorders, and two. Permanent pay raise for teachers, three and five years, permanent, not a bonus, it's not going to go away any session, but it's every year. Three thousand dollar mentorship, this makes sense, I talked about this, for the teachers, your high-performing teachers that want to mentor, new, or teachers that are learning a new subject, give them a bonus, motivate them, because another thing I love about this bill is you, if you're top-performing teachers, can actually make six-figure salaries, a little bit of competition entering, entering a school district. Literacy and math, okay, here's the main thing that I learned. here's the main thing that I learned. Third grade, eight-year-olds, if they are not reading by the time they finish third grade, 50% shot, 50% of their success as adults is compromised. So we focused at the end of the, end of the public ed hearings, we focused on that. Third grade, we've got to catch and harry. We are fully funding kindergarten, we are putting more money into early childhood. But here's the cool thing. We have a line item in the budget that covers literacy and math training for K-8 to 8 teachers. So this new test, not the start, but we got rid of in the third session. This new test is three shorter tests, 25 less multiple questions, for reading, less time, they're shorter, the first two are norm, the last one in the spring is criterion. But here's the nice thing about it. They take the test in the fall, math and reading, and then in the winter, they sit down with the teacher. Ah, you're making progress in math, but not in reading. Guess what? Until your spring test, we are going to concentrate on the reading. It is making the teachers and the students accountable to their progress. This three-tier test is more of a monitor, a progress report. So we're hoping, I'll be very curious to hear the results. I think you are already doing, doing maps already? Okay, well, the only ones you have to do, at least new ones by law, so you can decide on all the other norm references, as I understand it. Do you all like the maps? You all happy with maps? Okay. What do you want to try? 850 million for special ed, again, catch those kids early. And 677 million for early learning, and 153 million for CTE, which we have an amazing facility for that. So that's all I got. And I know you can't answer questions, but I would love for any of you to reach out to me, my office, call or text. And I need ideas. I would love ideas for the next session. How was some of this new, these new features, energy tools working for you? Just thinking. Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming, Mr. Curwood. I think we'd like to get a picture with you, the board.
And I think we've got a goodie bag for some swag.
Okay, we'll move right along to consider the consent agenda items.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
One second.
I have a motion by Krista and a second by Jeff. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes. Next, we will consider the adoption of Hill County tax rate.
Good evening again, board. So again, last month, you, as board, proposed a voter approval tax rate to be placed on the Hill College notice. And so what we will be doing this time as a board is considering the adoption of the Hill College tax rate for the 2025 year per Texas tax vote, Chapter 26. So any questions that you might have any answer for?
I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the adoption of the Hill College tax rate at the no new revenue rate as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Krista and a second by Simone to approve the Hill College tax rate as the no new revenue tax rate. Any other discussion? If there is none, I'll entertain a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? No, the motion passes. Next, we'll consider the adoption of the Godley ISD tax rate.
Thank you again, Terry. So again, this one is a little bit different than we've done in the past since we changed our fiscal year typically in the month of August. We not only approved the budget, but then turned around and approved the tax rate right after that. Since we are now at June fiscal year end, we adopt the budget in June, and then we wait until August or September to adopt our tax rates. And so the tax rate is being proposed for the 2025 school year per Texas Education Project 44, is maintenance and operations rate of 78.5 cents, the interest and sinking rate of 50 cents for a total order for the tax rate of $1.28.5.
I make a motion to approve the Godley ISD tax rate for 2025 through 26 at 1.285 as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Simone.
I'll second.
By Krista. Any other discussion?
Yes, I know I mentioned this in the budget hearing as well as last month, but just for the public since we're going on it tonight. I did vote no to the budget on June 16th due to maxing out the tax rate. And again, with the new calculations, the district is maxing out the voter approval tax rate of 1.2850, which is the highest tax rate the district can adopt before requiring voter approval at an election. The proposed tax rate, again, we're maxing it out. We've done that in the last several years. Taxpayers are hurting, they're overtaxed. And I would like to see Godley ISD discontinue the use of maxing out this tax rate to help hurting taxpayers.
So are you voting against the potential for teacher raises? Those are legislative, and I voted for that budget amendment last month. So no, I'm not voting against teacher raises.
Actually, they're not all legislative. There were plenty of raises that the district had to fund with this tax rate.
And I did vote to approve that last month.
So just as a, as a note, for every penny that you lose, it's about $190,000. So by default, if we do not approve the tax rate at what is recommended by the state and what's been approved by the voters, there's potential that you lose that amount of funding, which will lead into the available budgets to give raises and keep current staff.
Good question. Would you suggest proposing a tax rate reduction?
Yes.
So how would we, do you have a proposal for budget to match reduction?
And again, I did talk about this in the budget hearing, but receiving a five-page budget doesn't give me any details to come up with that. I would like to see the administration work on our budgets to discontinue maxing out the tax rate.
This is your third year, fourth, third year of looking at those budgets. You don't have a budget. You don't have a budget for a big budget.
Again, a five-page budget does not give me line items.
I'd also like to comment that the tax rate is going to be lower, so that means about a four member-ish decrease in the average homeowner in Godley ISD.
And I, I, sorry. I would like to thank the eliminate property tax advocates who did go to Austin and legislatively, they advocated for the increase in homestead exemption. That due, which will be voted on in November, but the bill was signed by Governor Abbott after our June budget workshop. But I would like to thank them for their hard work for that. And that, along with also the protests, is the reason that we're actually seeing this reduction.
Well, that homestead tax exemption was, that's been a thing since before the minimum property tax was created on that basis.
Well, I'm saying the increase, the $40,000 increase.
Any other discussion?
Just as clarification as well, you're not necessarily approving the highest tax rate that we could have. The no new revenue rate is over $1.30. So when you do the calculations, we're actually, the voter approval tax rate is under the no new revenue rate.
Right, but we're still requesting the voter approval tax rate, which is the max tax rate that we can't pass.
I would think the no new revenue tax rate would be the higher one we could actually approve that, could we? The state won't allow it. Any other discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? We have one opposed. The motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll consider the foreign exchange student waiver through TEA.
Okay, yes, so we have foreign exchange students here at the high school. And so in an effort to make this the best that it can be, we are requesting a foreign exchange student waiver that allows the district to actually limit the number of foreign exchange students to seven students here at the high school annually. The large number leads to creating financial and poor staffing hardships, dimensioning the district's ability to provide a high quality educational service for the district's domestic students, and also requiring domestic students to compete with foreign exchange students of educational resources. This waiver, if approved, we're applying to this whole year, 26, 27, and 27, 28. So this one plus two more, so three years to go. And so we have ambitions to approve the foreign exchange student waiver as presented.
I have a quick question. On average, how many requests do we get per year?
Last year, we had 12.
Last year, we had 12.
Yeah. And we have six at this point this year.
Was 12, though, those we have? I thought.
Do they typically come during the middle of the year, or they should already be here for the coming?
No, ma'am. The companies generally reach out to us in late spring for the following school year or throughout the summer. These companies are actively looking for places to place these foreign exchange students. And one of the things we encountered last year, Dr. Deere had one of the foreign exchange students. The foreign exchange students, their experience is to come meet the American culture and meet new friends and get around here. 12 of them, they formed their own little group last year. And part of that is because they're nervous. Part of that is because they all speak English a little bit slower, so they're comfortable around each other. But we noticed for the first time last year that they weren't as involved in all the things we do around school as normal with previous years when we had less. They just kind of secluded off and went to the side. And a couple of the parents even responded, like one foreign exchange student never left the house, just stayed at home and sat on the couch all the time. They're like, don't you want to go to homecoming? Don't you want to go to prom? Don't you want to go to all the things to get the experience? And he's like, no, I'll just sit here. And when there's only a few here, they're just, it's more of a novelty for our students. They latch on to them, they bring them involved because, hey, teach me about your culture. But with so many, they just kind of secluded themselves last year. And so we'll live with that. Additionally, you know, the hardship, our classes are getting big. And so depending on where they fall in the grade levels, those classes are already at 30 in a lot of cases. That just adds one more that makes it difficult for that sitting.
So will it be like a first come, first served basis kind of situation? Like, I know there were a lot of families that wanted to host, so.
Yes, ma'am. And that's advertising for us to publish out, so people are aware of that and know of that. We do internally track which programs give us better students. Some of them, we've had a couple of students come, and their English was really poor, and they had to return back to their home countries. So we know which programs are like, yes, we trust you all. But these companies, when they find a school that'll take anybody, and they come out of the woodwork, there are several companies that started hitting us up for foreign exchange kids, and they really hit families hard. Hey, take a kid, take a kid, take a kid. Your district will take them. And some of them are not prepared or ready based on that company's background work to make sure they're ready for school.
A couple of quick questions. Have we had a limit prior? I think you said we had 12.
No, sir. We had 12 last year, but we noticed that for the first time. I reached out to other districts around us, and a lot of them incorporate this limit just for the reasons I mentioned earlier.
That was my next question. You said, what did they read?
Yeah, several hospitals, you know, around six to seven they're good with. You know, that gives enough that they can have some friends, but they also have to branch out and make new friends. So sit this people's section. Get loud at the ball games. Just have fun. So.
I make a motion to approve the foreign exchange waiver through TEA 2025 through 26 as presented.
I second.
Is that the right numbers?
Yes, 25, 26, 26, 27, and 27, 28.
So TEA 2025, 26, 27, 28, and 28, 29 as presented? Nope, I did that wrong. Just as presented. Numbers are far as they're right.
I second whatever she says.
I have a motion by Krista, a second by Simone. Is there any other discussion?
Quick question. Could we get to what on this? Is this a lot of people? Do we have any?
Well, we've done it for three years.
So it's every three years?
We can.
Realistically, we could vote again next year if we hasn't changed this, but this will take us for three, or six, or three.
Now we'll take a vote. All those in favor? None opposed? The motion passes. Next, we'll consider the Declaration of Godley ISD's non-business days for 2026.
Okay, so lastly, HB 30, 33, a couple of years ago, requires everyone to apply 10 non-business days for a calendar year, on a school year, so a calendar year. So this is for 2026. So there are already days, state holidays, federal holidays, that are incorporated. And so these are 10 non-business days that we place them when, basically, when we have some extended absence and nobody's here. So that would be around Christmas and around the two weeks that come in the summer. So the dates that we're recommending are June 26th, 29th, and 30th, July 1, 2, 3, and December 21, 22, 23, and 24. So clarifications to the non-business days for 2026.
For clarification purposes, really, this only affects the 11, 10, 11, 12, like the longer contracts. The employees own the longer contracts, like teachers, obviously, on the just normal school year calendar.
Right. So like I say, for example, you know, some of the business office might be out for a couple of weeks, and we get a request, an information request for employee list, and, you know, some information that they would have. And it makes it very difficult to get that because there's nobody there. And so this helps us to get what we need.
I make a motion to approve the Declaration of Godley ISD's non-business days for 2026 as presented and recommended.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Krista and a second by Simone. Any other discussion? We'll take a vote now. All those in favor? Motion passes. Next, we'll go into closed session under the following section of the Texas Open Meeting Act, five. Five point five, five, one point oh seven six, considering employment, specific occasions for, or implementation of security personnel or devices.
We will reconvene to open at 7:29.
Make motion to adjourn.
Motion, Mr. President?
No.